Call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, you have blessed this community with abundance, and with thankful hearts we express our gratitude. You have created us with opportunities to serve other people in their need, to share together in respect and affection, and to be faithful in the responsibilities we have been given. May all that we do be acceptable in your sight. Amen.
Okay, first off, before we begin, there are several changes to the original printed agenda. Item 3D supplemental appropriation for public schools for grants has been added. Would like to add an item 4E, which would be a youth council legislative update. We have several of them here. And then we have one other addition, which would be a closed-meeting item, which you will address at that time. Do we have any other changes?
Motion to approve the agenda as modified?
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. That takes us to our public appearances. First would be the business spotlight. Annette Barrett, or Barrett? Okay, owner of Lacy's Florist.
Hello. My name is Annette Barrett, and I purchased Lacy's Florist going on three years, February 1st. I'm very excited and proud to own Lacy's after its seventy years of legacy here in Orange. We employ five different ladies there that have helped me turn the business running smoothly after just purchasing it and starting some new avenues in it. We've opened a gift line this past and last six months, we're very excited about. And we have also grown our wedding and events and tuxedo rentals. So, we would also like to be a big part of giving back to the community. And with that, on Valentine's Day, we just started a promotion for Love Outreach, our food pantry here locally. And you can be a part of our famous Lacy's window display by buying a heart, and all the proceeds go to Love Outreach. So that's something else we're excited about. But the transition moving here to Orange has been a wonderful one. Everyone has been just lovely to me, and I want to thank the community for that. We're building strong. Next year, we're going to be working on our visibility. You can now like us on Facebook and like us on Pinterest. You can shop twenty-four hours a day, lacy'sflorist.com. And we just updated our vehicle that we're really excited about. Has anybody seen it moving around town? If you do, you will see it. So if you do, just tell us.
That's a hint, guys.
See, Valentine's is in April, is that right?
Valentine's is coming, don't forget. February fourteenth. We're open eight-thirty to five o'clock, and now carrying gifts, you know, if you have to, I like leave my cellphone on my answering machine. If you need something in emergency or something comes up that you really need to contact me, I welcome everyone to do that. So, thank you so much.
This is when you give the hint to everyone, just because the wife says, "You know, sweetie, I don't want any flowers." You don't fault that.
That's right, exactly.
Unless she has like some allergic reaction or something.
That's right, you got it.
Like a nature thing, she wants flowers.
That's right.
Annette has saved me a couple of times already. Giving away trade secrets there.
Something tells me Barbara doesn't watch these videos. I think he's saying...
Okay, next we have the Virginia Department of Transportation update. Mark Nesbit.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Appreciate y'all having me here tonight. Mark Nesbit with VDOT. And I want to thank the board for all the work that you do here in Orange County. I think you should have a copy of our most recent report for your information. We currently have two projects that are under contract in Orange County. One is a district-wide guardrail improvement contract, and another one is a plant mix contract that was let in the fall of last year that will carry over this spring, or carry over this year and be completed by the end of 2014. This year, in Orange County, we'll have under contract 1.74 miles of slurry seal, seventeen, which is a type of a seal course, it's sort of a preventative-maintenance-type application. We'll have 17.96 roadway miles of surface treatment, which is a tar and gravel-type treatment. And then we'll have 15.62 miles of plant mix on secondary roads. And we'll be resurfacing with plant mix 4.51 miles of route fifteen just north of Gordonsville. This is what we've got planned this year for our resurfacing program. This month, or in the month of February, we'll be coordinating with county staff to get the update for a secondary six-year plan going. I think we've already coordinated a meeting date, or in the process of coordinating a meeting date to get that started. And so I encourage, if you have any citizens' requests or any requests for roads, unpaved roads, to be considered, you know, we'll be, you know, be going through that process for the next three months. I think May typically is the month we have our public meetings to finalize it. So we'll be going through that process here shortly. Other than having to deal with winter maintenance issues on a very frequent basis, I don't really have any other items to report at this time. I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Did you ever finish the light timing checks on the Route 3 at Walmart and at Sixteenth Avenue?
Yes, I did get those two signals. They're coordinated. I've checked with them, and we haven't gotten any, you know, they implemented a new timing plan.
They did, because I haven't had any complaints recently.
They implemented a new timing plan. They're supposed to be coordinated. I've been through them probably three or four times over the past couple of months, and I haven't seen anything, and I haven't heard of any issues.
Okay, I mean, I haven't either. I just wondered, but I never heard that it actually got done.
Okay, I apologize for that, but it has been done.
Okay.
I have a question, Mark. A follow-on to some meeting that we had some months back. I continue to get requests occasionally from constituents that have roads usually in a subdivision that they would, they'd love to see the state take over the maintenance, so they don't have to fool with it. But, you know, there's, and I know there's a set of procedures and rules that you follow. The question that seems to come up more often now is whether or not there's any sort of advisory role that you guys could play. And I know you don't want to get too deep involved in this issue, but a lot of times people have the need, they can see, there's one case where the road was paved many years ago, and there are potholes now that, I mean, they're, you know, the size of a dining room table and the like. It would have been better if the road had never been paved, frankly, but it was. And they don't really know where to start. They don't, you know, understand what utilities would have to be moved, and whether the road would have to be widened, and what about entrance ways and things like that. And I'm just asking if there's, you know, any assistance that you guys are in a position to help point the direction or give them some guidance, whatever the case might be. I recognize that's a little outside of your major responsibilities, but we do have a substantial need. I suspect every district is, you know, from time to time gets a similar kind of issue.
I think that is something that we can, we can do is review the road in question with the, with the property owners. You know, if, you know, I think if we could get some assistance with scheduling a meeting with them, we could certainly review it with them, or, you know, if they have a spokesperson, you know, that's speaking for the citizens on the road, we can certainly, you know, meet with them and look at the road and give them some idea of what it would take to bring it up to standard.
Yeah, one of the problems is it varies. I mean, there'd be parts, segments of the road that are fairly close to what you need standard-wise, and other segments that are, you know, that were done at a different time or whatever, and so there's a lot of confusion. That would be helpful. Okay, I'll follow up with you with some specifics.
Yeah, each road's going to be different, in different shape, and it may have a different cost to get it up to standard, but we'll be happy to meet with them and see what it takes.
Appreciate that. Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, next would be the animal shelter biannual report. Beth.
Chairman, Mrs. Adams, gentlemen. We had no major construction projects at the shelter in 2013, so I have no PowerPoint presentation for you today. And I don't want to be redundant by going over all the small details that were included in my report. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about it. And then I'd like to go over some of the new information that I can provide today, if that's all right. Okay. Major projects as identified for continued focus in calendar year 2014, we're not included in the report and are as follows. We have concluded fundraising efforts and have approximately fifty-one thousand for the generator project, and that should be on the docket for your February 11th meeting. So we're very excited to have that out of the CIP and actually be able to move forward with it and have that installed at the shelter, we hope. We're looking to complete installation of new software system. The PetPoint system is a really neat one, because we can actually share information with other shelters that are using the same software, and that'll save us a lot of time, especially when we're doing our networking and our rescue work. And we're also going to continue fundraising for the fire suppression system. Total right now is forty thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, and we need, I think, a hundred and seventy-two thousand. But we'll get there, so we're going to keep working on that. Some new developments, we were very pleased today to be told by PetSmart Charities that we have been selected as one of five shelters across the nation to be featured in their upcoming publicity for our rescue work, specifically relating to what we did with a little Jack Russell named Scrappy, who came to us severely burned across his chest and back, and we saved his life and did some rehab work with him, and he was accepted into the program and went to Greater Andes Grog in Maine and was adopted. So they're going to be doing the interviews, and they've accepted all our photos and video, and we're very pleased to be one of the five shelters for this honor. The rabies clinics for 2014 will be April 6th and October 19th. The date for the volunteer appreciation picnic is still to be determined based on the availability of the venue. And there is a new pet store in Fredericksburg called Natural Pet on Route 3, and they are going to be putting in an adoption cattery for us in their store and donating all the food for the cats while they're up there and handling adoptions for us. So we're very pleased and grateful to have that new venue opening for us. So, that's what I have for you today. Any questions? Yeah, always. I've got transport tonight, actually. Four golden retrievers are going to therapy dog program through a rescue agency, so, yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you, Beth. Tell all your volunteers thank you, too.
Oh, we're so grateful for that. Small army.
Just tell them we appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
Alrighty, the economic development quarterly report. Karen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you, you actually have the annual report for 2013. And what I did was I went back and pulled up a lot of data so that we could do some comparisons to show how things tend to be improving in Orange County. If you look back at the report, the four-year unemployment comparisons show a significant improvement in our unemployment rate from November 2010, which was seven point six percent at the time, and for November 2013, it's down to five point four percent, which shows that there is definitely an improvement in the economy and in the market. Also did a three-year comparison on prospect activities, which show that we've had a significant increase in prospect activity in Orange County with a total of twenty twelve, for 2012 prospects, actually, this must be 2013, we had a total of eighteen prospects for Orange County, which is a huge increase over the last several years. Actually had the location of Homestead Building Systems, which was a four-and-a-half million dollar investment in Orange County with new jobs ranging from forty to fifty additional employees. And I do know that there have been individuals hired at Homestead Building Systems, actually several individuals that had been former employees for the Timber Trust facility have been hired out at the facility, so that's exciting. And I continue to get calls for people that are interested in employment out there. So we're trying to get the job descriptions from the company so that we can have them work with the Orange Workforce Center as far as screening employees for that facility. The marketing activities, we had our first e-newsletter that was sent to six hundred and fifty recipients. We had several tours of sites and buildings by the Virginia Economic Development Partnership in Orange County. And we had the Orange County Business Expo, which we're working with the tourism office to do that again for 2014. If you look at the website statistics for ThinkOrangeVA.com, we had a significant increase in those views of the website. It basically tripled, if not more than that, for 2013. And we're really excited about that, which shows that we're getting hits from all over the world, basically, is what our websites, website statistics have shown. So we're continuously making improvements, adding updates and news releases, keeping our sites and buildings updated, so that when individuals look and scan our site and building data, we have the most current information on that. The Orange Workforce Center, for 2012, they actually served a little over nineteen hundred individuals at that center. And for 2013, it dropped to fifteen hundred, which hopefully is a good sign, that there are people that are finding jobs, not necessarily just in Orange County, but in the region. I know that when Lisa Howkes spoke with you all last board meeting, I believe, you asked if there was any way to find out how many people had actually found jobs by going through the workforce center. So she and I are working on that together and hoping that we'll be able to provide some of that data to you as well. We have quite a few projects in progress. We're working with the Timmons Group, who's actually doing a site analysis study on the King property, as well as the EDA-owned York property, which is about twenty-five to twenty-eight acres, I believe. So they're doing a study on that to see if they can give us some important data that we can use in marketing those two sites. We're also busy with the Route 3 strategic visioning initiative with preparation for the Route 3 charrette, as well as our steering committee meetings. As I stated, we're working with the tourism office for creating the 2014 Business Expo. And we also have a Piedmont Workforce Network Job Fair that we're working with the other economic development offices, which will be held at the Germana Daniel Technology Center. We have a flyer that we're going to send out to all the businesses that we have in our database, making them aware of the job fair. So if they want to have a booth there, if they're recruiting, looking for a specific skill set, then they have that information to participate in that. So those are just a few of the things we're doing in economic development. Any questions?
I have a comment. I don't know if you saw this NACO report on business changes over the last two years. It's, it came out in the NACO letter, and then went to the website. But I looked at Orange County, it's a couple of interesting things, and I'll give you this. But it showed that our GDP over, since 2002, grew sixty percent. But our employment from 2002 grew only five percent, which is sort of interesting in terms of efficiencies. I'll give you the number, I'll give you the stuff here, and it, and it shows some jobs growth rate over the last couple of years and a few other things, but I just thought that's sort of amazing, that by their standards, GDP's increased this much with only a small increase in labor.
In labor.
That was pretty, pretty significant.
I'd like to see that. Anything else?
Thank you, Karen. Okay, now we will have the youth council legislative update. With Alicia in company.
Yes, my posse. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for adding us to the agenda tonight. I just wanted to recognize some of our youth council members this evening for some of the work that they have put in recently, specifically with Delegate Scott and Senator Reeves. December 12th, we had the Legislative Dinner at the nursing home that was hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, and each year we send members of the youth council, one of which is always elected to speak. Ann Taylor was lucky, be the lucky one to speak this year. And she addressed some of the concerns that were raised in our youth risk behavior survey that is done through the school system every year. And the information that we provided on mental health issues really caught Senator Reeves' attention. And so he charged the youth council, along with Dr. Grimacey, myself, Mr. Kotalka, to provide them with three solid things to work on, basically, that they could address during the general session this year. Excuse me. That happened December 12th. The kids have it, had to have it in by December 20th. So it was a very quick turnaround time. We had basically a week to get it done and to arrange all their schedules and everything, so they gave up time out of classes and everything else so that we could get it done. It was very, very productive, and the kids did a wonderful job. We recently received a letter back from Senator Reeves acknowledging the kids and their work, and so I wanted to recognize them for the hard work that they've put into it, and that it has gone to the state level, and that their opinions matter. So I just wanted to recognize them. These are some of the members that participated. Not everyone could be here tonight, but again, thank you for letting me recognize them.
You're more than welcome.
I see you also got a letter from Ed Scott.
I'm sorry, we got it back from Ed Scott, not Senator Reeves. So sorry.
I was actually going to say, man, you're getting something if you get a letter back from Reeves.
Reeves, we can't do that.
So sorry.
You can't even get him to come to Orange County, so...
Well, we are going, some of the members of the youth council are going on Tuesday, actually, to visit with Delegate Scott and Senator Reeves. We do have time scheduled with both. We're going to sit in on the session and take a tour of the Capitol and just spend the day in Richmond. So we're very excited about that, and we're very excited that they've given us time to meet with them, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Move on to public comment. Anyone signed up? Okay, in that case, we will move to board comment.
Let me, just a minute here. You saw the public comment.
Yeah, but that's for tonight at seven o'clock.
Oh, that's the seven o'clock one? Got it. Okay, move to board comment.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the action items. First one, the award of contract for fire and EMS reporting software, the software. Stephanie.
Hello. In late September, Chief Harkness and I worked to release a solicitation for fire and emergency services software. And we placed it on our website, the local paper, and on Eva, reaching a little over two thousand vendors. We received three responses back, and after reviewing them with several staff members, we feel most confident moving forward with Zoll's proposal. Zoll is a very well-respected provider. They have been in business for over twenty years and have about twelve hundred clients who use similar software. We would be using it for the Rescue Net EPCR and Rescue Net Fire RMS. And this is a project that has been budgeted in the CIP line, and we actually come in under budget. Any questions?
Does that mean that the PCR on the tough books change?
Yes. What will mean is, all five volunteer fire departments, the two volunteer rescue squads, and the career service will be using the exact same platform. Not only is this a reporting software, but it's a total records management where we'll be able to track our personnel, training, inventories, vehicle repair.
I just, but the thing on the tough book will be a different format?
Yes.
I guess I can learn it. Okay. Stephanie, do you have the split of the forty-nine between the implementation and the first year? I've been trying to get a sense of what the operator...
It's roughly the same. It's the twenty-three thousand and change for the implementation, and twenty-three thousand and change for the first year, first year services. It's about thirteen thousand and change for each of the two products. And we left it open, so we could subtract or add depending on staff needs or volunteer needs, things of that nature. It's totally hosted, so it's nothing that we have to have a maintenance contract for. Zoll's taking care of all of that. Which Larry's very happy about.
You said you went up to two thousand vendors and only three replied. Are they not in our area, or just...
They may not have been able to give us the total solution, so they may have been able to give us scheduling software, but then maybe weren't able to do some of the reporting. We asked that the vendors be able to basically pull from their database and upload to the state and federal, and a lot of people didn't have experience with the Commonwealth system.
So you asked for a big conglomerate thing, said that, right? Okay. No further questions, I'd look for a motion.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero. Uh, next, support letter for the RCSB.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in your package you're finding a letter from Mr. Brian Duncan, Executive Director of the Rapid Handic, Rapid Handic Services. He is asking this board to supply a letter of support for their actors to purchase a total of six vans to be used in their transportation programs. This would be submitted along with their funding request to the Commonwealth under a federal funding program. This does not impose any financial commitments on the county. This is your essentially letter of support, and as I understand, this is as soon as your other letters of support in your path.
Seconded.
You can give your second, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees.
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Tony Wilson to the EDA.
Okay. Do we have any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, Tony, welcome aboard. All right, discussion items. First, the request from the ODA regarding parking.
Yes, sir. Members of the board, in your package you're using email from Jeff Hurst, Executive Director of the Orange Downtown Alliance, asking for this board's permission to use the parking for the Edible Food Festival we held on August ninth, 2014. This board has agreed to this use of the parking lot in years past for this. One note, I talked to the county attorney and just trying to get my lay of the land of what the county owns and doesn't own. You're saying the county owns the park, the parking lot. And my suggestion would be that the board just word its motion so that it agrees some use of it, or there's no objection to the use of it. That way you're not saying you own it, but you agree to the use of it, no objection to it.
The funny thing is, we had this conversation when we did it last year, and I was the one like, we don't even own the parking lot. So it, we can't, we couldn't tell them they couldn't use it anyway.
Well, I think, I think from a standpoint of ownership, this is use, and you all have it as for your exclusive use for the purposes of the county's function. And so what you're saying is you don't object to waiving your exclusive use, I guess if I can do it that way.
We have exclusive use?
It's not exclusive, but we have used, they can't exclude us. I think that's what you're trying to say. They can't exclude us from using it, so we're basically saying we don't object.
How about I make the motion that I don't care if they have their party out there? Because they've been doing it for the past two years, and it's great. You're welcome.
Yeah.
Okay, motion as second.
But the whole, I wonder still about the edible food fest. I wonder where they're going to have a non-edible food fest. Just wondering.
All right, motion as second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then we have an update on the funding request from the Repahanic River Basin Commission for Raingate. Uh, and then we have an update on the funding request from the Rapid Handic River Basin Commission for rain gauges.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's January fourteenth. Community staff came in with a request from the Rapid Handic River Basin Commission for certain funding of rain gauges in place in the county as a large regional watershed project. The board asked several questions of this that staff did not have the answers for. And we went back and contacted Mr. Eldon James, who provided information as to why was this not prorated on the number of gauges per, per locality as applied to based on the participation of the local counties. How many gauges would be installed in Orange County under the current proposal? It wasn't clear. We were going to have two rain gauges installed, one of them Lignam and Raccoon Ford. And that, what are these going to be used for and how would they benefit Orange County? And why would we contribute financially? And as I understand it, in your package, it's pretty detailed, but it boils down to we would be anticipating with the, the Department of Emergency Emergency Management I-Flow System. It's essentially an emergency management system dealing with flooding conditions. And it will allow us to participate in information gathering and alerts to public safety officials certainly. Our public safety officials, in the event there are severe storms causing flooding, we would get, I guess, preliminary notice and be able to act accordingly.
Sounds to me like this is sort of not only a, a measurement, but a predictive since they, they look at weather as well. Twelve.
Twelve.
It's which all's pleasure.
I would think we should support it.
I would agree.
And I would make such the motion.
Okay, have a motion. Who supports, was originally presented to us, I guess. Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One, one thing I apologize, this is something I should have included in this, was the source of funds.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question when we got to discussion. Where, where did my?
Finance director and we, we could find maybe.
How much is remaining in contingency?
Or is this an item we should be considering during the budgeting process for beginning July one? I mean, I.
I, I think there was a timing issue on here at the end of January. I mean, if we would like to be able to advise the legislative agents of your decision before the end of January, if that is possible.
All right, but is that just, giving them the decision or giving them the money?
When did we annex?
Colpepper County. Another question.
Or Raccoon Ford.
Or Raccoon Ford, either one.
None of these gauges are in Orange County. Lignam and Raccoon Ford are not in Orange. And all the gauges are downstream for, from us.
Yeah, but you also, it also tells you what's gonna happen in terms of what the flooding is and you can predict somewhat upstream from what happens downstream.
So are there gauges upstream from us? And other river basins?
It looks like so.
I believe they have Culpepper, Culpeper, Rapid Handic, Rapid Handic, Potsie, Bane, plus Bane and Stafford. And there's apparently.
Yeah, some are upstream and downstream.
Yeah, they're not, they wouldn't be upstream from us.
Yeah.
You would need Madison Green to be upstream from us.
Remember, in here they said. Madison is not participating because there is a, I mean, you all could agree to do this in that we would need to come back at the appropriate time with information on the source of funds for this. That certainly would commit you to funding the project if us to search, find out contingency or another source.
You say you can get the, the contingency fund after the break?
Yeah, I can get it right now if you.
Well, what they're asking for, according to the letter, is twelve thousand dollars. Well, they, they said, we would like to be able to advise the legislative patrons of your decision before the end of January, if that is possible. That's, it sounds like all they're looking for.
It's just agreement that you're going to do.
Is a commitment to do it, right.
And that we would come back. I would always prefer to do these things in the orderly process of the budget beginning July first.
That'd be my preference too. Although if we make the commitment, then. Well, I mean, if they make the commitment and they need the money before then, I, I would imagine we've got at least twelve thousand two hundred and fourteen in the contingency fund.
Mr. Chairman, we can just pass by this until she comes back, if you're not in the re visiting and she does.
Okay, okay. Hold on a minute until we get the rest of the information.
Thank you.
Okay.
The gauge of one of them really cool things John Harkness showed us last week. It costs twelve thousand dollars. It could save a county resident's life.
All right, any question on the information items?
Just if I could, Mr. Chairman, we met together, the staff about the high grade employees and we'll have a proposal for your consideration at your next meeting.
Okay.
And then on the emergency communication system, we also met this morning. A number of us with a consultant who I think would be able to help us at least understand what our media needs and then certainly start looking toward the future with the county's radio communication. My intent is to come to you with a proposal for a private scope deliverables and schedule from a qualified consultant who connects with you to at least assess where we are with the county's radio system. Sheriff and Chief Harkness. I'm the one who actually seemed very comfortable with that.
Okay. Any questions on the committee reports? I have one, one last thing I, I forgot earlier when I went to the planning commission meeting and charged them to go ahead and actually start working on our zoning ordinances. Where I got reminded that they would like to be paid more money.
For having, for having to meet so often.
So wanted to bring that to y'all's attention and we'll, we can talk about it next meeting, but something to think about. So with that, if there's nothing else, uh, until, was she gonna bring that right back or are we gonna wait?
I think she's coming.
She's, she's coming back, but if you, if there's anything else, if you all.
The only other thing we have is closed meeting and then, uh.
You got anything, no, nothing on the calendar?
Yeah, nothing except.
Anything unusual on the calendar?
All right, well, we'll wait a second for her.
Well, you know it's coming out of contingency. We know we've got the money in contingency. She's just letting us know how much money it is and if we're down to twelve thousand dollars in conti, it was like.
I apologize, I should have had that in mind, but I just didn't focus on it. The only other thing is that on your calendar, you did have a work session scheduled as part of the master budget calendar. And I asked you all's permission to just cancel that and defer it to the next meeting when we will have a work session. And I'll be prepared to at least give you a limited scope of, in terms of correction of the budget. Just to let you know, we have scheduled all of the departments and functions to have budgeted of these with the finance director, myself, over the course of the next three days, starting Thursday, Friday and Monday. And so we'll get through that kind of line item approach to, to the county's budget. And I'll be better, much better informed Monday than I am right now with the state of the county's operating side of the budget.
Do you want to go ahead and do the thing on, we know where it's coming from.
That's fine. All right, well, in that case, we have a motion. We had a second discussion. Okay.
I, I think it's a waste of money, to be very honest with you, because we're being asked to fund, but I don't foresee as much of a benefit for us.
John, is it, in terms of getting warnings on, emergency warnings for on flooding issues, do we get that stuff or are we in that circuit?
I use the river gauges on a routine basis when we start getting heavy rains. On the Rapid End, there is a gauge at twenty-nine. In the Rapid End, there is a gauge in Orange County, right near five twenty-two.
Is that, are those a part of the I-Flow system as well?
That's not part of the, the I-Flow. I-Flow is more on the, the rain gauges itself. These are river gauges. Madison County is part of the, the I-Flow. But from my, my experience from when I was in Richmond and in here, I, I constantly monitor the, the river levels because that's gonna give us an indication of what's gonna be happening here in Orange.
So even though these things aren't in the county, you would monitor them as well?
Yeah, because what's gonna affect flooding in Orange County isn't necessarily the rain you get in Orange County. It's the rain that you're getting upstream, which is gonna be, you know, Madison Green. So that's where you're really paying attention. That's gonna have the greatest impact on flooding in Orange County.
Which, there's already gauges in place there.
There is, there's a gauge at twenty-nine, um, and then we have a gauge, it's.
Right about five twenty.
Between Rapid End and five twenty-two.
And that was my concern is that, that we care more about the river levels than we do the amount of rain. Because, you know, the, I, I live in an area where it can rain an inch and have no effect on my creeks. It can rain an inch and it can be, you know, ten times the size that they are. It just depends on all sorts of other things. So it's really not the amount of rain that matters. It's when did it last rain and, and so you're really concerned about the flow. And this doesn't seem to be giving us any information about the, any additional information about the flow. It's just raining.
There's one other thing that bothers me. They just said it was easier to just.
I.
Split the cost. That, that, to me, that's not a justification. Just saying that it's easier. Yeah, if it was easier, we could all go home and just let things happen as they'd happen.
I would say I, I am not persuaded that this is a good expenditure of money.
Nor am I. So let's vote.
Call the question.
Okay. Question is called. We want a roll call?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Nay.
Mrs. Zadd?
Nay.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails three-two. Haven't had one of those in a while. Okay. That being said, that brings the rest of the agenda to an end until we have the public comment. So we should go into closed.
All right, ready? Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. And discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where a previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities into the community. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A five and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County hereby authorize discussion of the four said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed.
All right. To the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting? Need a roll call.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mrs. Zadd?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. White is answering from Good.
Now we recess till seven.
Yes, um, we'll recess.
It's so weird hearing Mr. Crozier and.
Our clock's broken.
Oh. Call a meeting back to order. Uh, okay, seven o'clock, time for the public comment period on the Route Three Strategic Visioning Initiative. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Okay.
You all have copies of the letter?
All have.
Do we need to read it out loud, is there?
No.
Okay.
No, but I, I will enter into the.
Record.
Record that Bruce Kay has submitted the email. I do have a copy.
All right, you got a copy?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call the public comment for the Route Three Strategic Visioning. There's nothing left on the agenda.
Move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.